We would like to welcome you to the South Salt Lake City Council work meeting. It is Wednesday, August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty five. The time is six seventeen P M. We have all of our city council here is Paul Sanchez participating on Zoom. We hope he will join us soon on Zoom. We want to thank the mayor and staff for being here and all of our visitors. So, welcome, welcome. We have two matters for discussion. Our first matter is budget amendment discussion, so we will invite Crystal, who's already ready to talk about that.
Thank you, council. We have just a couple of items to handle for.
Crystal, can I?
Yes, please.
It was the first day of school. My brain's not with me right now. I need to exclude, excuse Leanne Huff. She's not with us tonight, sorry.
All right, we have just a couple of items to address as far as the budget goes today. They're mainly housekeeping for the most part. The first item that we are proposing in this budget amendment is in the general fund. It is a transfer from the general fund to the transportation utility fund. And it is just to true up the amount of Class C funds that were transferring that used to be held as restricted funds in the general fund. Now they'll be housed in the transportation fund where they'll be able to be used for for street projects. And the amount of that one is six million, five hundred eighty eight thousand, five hundred dollars. Then the second item that we have is in, we are proposing a couple amendments to the capital fund. The first one is also a transfer from the capital fund to the transportation utility fund. For that same reason, we have held in restricted funds, highway tax funds and road funds. And so we'll be moving those out of the capital fund and into the transportation fund. The amount of that is six million, three hundred forty thousand, four hundred ninety nine dollars. And then the next two are both transfers from the capital fund over to the R D A. The first one transfers into the housing fund. Initially, when we proposed the budget back in May, we had budgeted for a million dollars for the affordable housing program that we are working on getting going. But after meeting with all the stakeholders, we've determined that it would be better for those funds to be expended out of the R D A housing fund rather than out of the city's capital fund. And that's just for better tracking and the R D A has access to some as some things that the that the capital fund doesn't have access to. So the amount of that is one million dollars. And then the other one is a transfer again from the capital fund to the R D A H T R Z fund. That amount is two million dollars and it will go to supporting the some of the initial development in the H T R Z zone. And then the final item that we have for the budget amendment that we're proposing is in the transportation utility fund. As you know, last time the council met, you passed into ordinance the transportation fund and authorized us to begin collecting that. So this amendment item recognizes two point six million of transportation utility fees. And initially, when we had prepared the budget, we had excluded some bridge projects. And so we're also picking up those bridge projects for the reconstruction of the two and three hundred east bridges. And that amount there is two point six million dollars. Are there any questions?
Anyone have any questions? You seem very simple. You always prepare them so well. Thank you, Crystal. We will now move on to item number two, thirty nine hundred south senior housing project. We will invite Jed Shum to come up and talk about it.
I'm Jesse Shum, city planner in community development. Good to see you again. Haven't been up here for a while, so it's good to, good to be back. And yeah, today we have, we'll have an exciting presentation for project, for affordable senior housing project in front of us. And which is presented by Thomas Lee from the Lee Group, who focuses on smart growth, urban revitalization and sustainability. And then he's partnering with Mario Willie on this project from Western Region Nonprofit Housing Corporation, who already has a profile project here in South Salt Lake, in Sharon Gardens. Perfect, thank you. And I'll let Thomas to expand on his team during his presentation. And then so their team has already been working with a staff on platform thirty nine hundred for about a year now. And we have reached a point of sort of like a make and break kind of a point now. And we want to make sure we have the support from council to continue to pursue this project. And then I'll be presenting really quick on the trade offs on the zoning requirements, changes or code amendments that we needed to accommodate this proposal today. So first of all, is that currently senior housing falls under the multi-family dwelling use. And staff would recommend to separate senior housing out as a separate land use to have a more tailor fit or like specific standards for this specific use to better accommodate this project and any future similar projects. And then secondly, will be on the parking currently, the residential, per residential unit, we require one point two stalls. So according to our current code and four per one thousand square feet for retail. Right now, this project will propose one hundred fifty units and four thousand square feet of retail space, which will conclude at about one hundred and ninety six stalls in total required in our current code. And this current proposal would propose seventy one off-site, off-street, onsite, off-street parking, garage parking for the residential units only, which rounds up to about zero point five stalls per unit. And there will be no off-street parking dedicated for the retail space at the moment. So the amendment to the code, we need to accommodate the deficit of about one hundred and twenty five stalls. And then lost size and not with, according to this proposal, right now it will be a little bit short on both criteria, which we agree that it will stimulate likely creativity and higher density, which the city does sort of look for. But at the same time, we will need to find the balance in that, in the amendment. They do meet the minimum retail space required here. And then lastly, on amenities, currently our code for multi-family dwelling developments, we require a certain number of amenities according to a number of units provided. And we'll, we'll, we think it will be best if we come up with a different category to best accommodate this project and amount of amenities. So basically, in conclusion, we're definitely excited and think this is a very, this is a project that the city will be very interested in and, but then at the same time, we need to look for the balance in what the code is trying to preserve and protect in terms of community value and our core image. And I'll pass the time to Thomas and his team.
And then Thomas, if you will just go through the whole presentation, we'll take notes and we'll do questions at the end, okay?
Okay, can you guys hear me?
That is better, thank you.
Sorry, I'm a bit nervous, so hopefully I don't stumble. All right, hopefully I don't stumble. And we have a lot of content, so I'm just gonna try to go as quickly as possible because I know we have fifteen minutes. And I like to leave a couple of minutes for James to talk about the project as well at the end. But we're, we're super excited about this project. This is essentially a passion project for us because it's not a market rate project. This is an affordable project and it's a senior project. So when we get to do projects like this, we think about our parents and why we're doing it and what they need in their community and their lives and stuff like that to improve their lives. So I'm happy to introduce you guys to platform thirty nine hundred. To give you guys a quick overview, which Jed actually did a good job. It's a hundred and fifty unit building, two buildings. It's podium parking, which we think is great because there's, for seniors, they don't have to deal with snow and walking around in snow. They can park underground and take an elevator up, which is a great usage. And of course, what we have built in is the community amenities. We think this project is more than housing. It's about the social interactions that we can bridge in here. So that is also why we have such an abundance of open space and green space. So what you're looking at is the green space that we want to program on the exterior of the building. We'll go through interior of the building as well, but there's an abundance on the outside and there's outdoor community open space on the deck, which will have programming for outdoor events when the weather's nice, like yoga and fitness and things of that nature. So what we'll have around on the ground floor, which we think is a really great idea, is community gardens. So outdoor planting of community gardens for social engagement and social interactions. This is the inside of the building. What we're wanting to call out is usually in a multi-family building, you have a lobby and then you have one community room, which makes sense for a lot of buildings. In fact, even the senior housing that I go to, for my parents and grandparents, they usually have one community room, which requires when you do an event to turn that over, you gotta set up and tear down. But it also could ask, add some confusion for the seniors, especially the older ones that don't know which, where to go or what time to go to that room. So what we're designing that's different is we're doing six rooms, three in each building. And with that, the purpose of this is because we want to purpose-built rooms that are permanent for a specific usage. So imagine something like a dance floor with a mirror and it's the same room. So if you're there for lion dancing, that's what my mother does at her senior stage. She knows exactly which room to go to and she can go consistently to that. If it's the art center, she goes and it's the art center, the art supplies are set up, they don't have to be torn down. Same with the barber shop. We want to contract barber shops and different hairstylists to come in. But it's so much easier if they're not mobile in the parking lot or setting up a chair and looking for a wash basin. So we will have a purpose-built barber shop with hair washing stations, dryers and permanent seating so that we can just rotate the staff and everybody knows what room to go to. And our goal, of course, is to dress it up so it looks nice and looks like a barber shop. But now we have different themed rooms. Now, we also know some of these themes may change over time because there's going to be a new trend in the future, whether it's an education room for A I or pickleball craze or whatever it is. But for now, these are the list of services that we believe are the most impactful and we're going to purpose-built these into the space. So if you're wondering why there's six community rooms, which is, sounds crazy. It's because we're going to purpose-build them for each function. So we're excited about this. This, in addition to the outdoor space, adds quite a bit of community interaction. One thing we love about this space is, of course, the location. We think it's a great location for this asset. There's already housing around this project. We love that the front climbing gym is there and of course, tracks T O D is here. And it just adds an abundance of availability, which I'll get into later. So this slide is to communicate seniors and the usage of seniors for parking and cars. And you can see the blue, blue lines is how much parking is built. The red line across is parking utilization. Parking utilization, based on the market study we conducted, is at about a point four three stalls per unit. So we're building this to a point five. And at point four three is measured and studied at the peak of the parking usage. So what I want to clarify, when you look at this, is the peak of the usage is actually when the visitors or the family comes, which is end of day, it's about this time, about five o'clock, six o'clock, where they bring meals and interact after work hours or early morning. So there's only a couple peaks, but overnight parking and day parking is actually well below this, probably at a point two five. So most of these parking lots sit empty except for visitor parking, which is great for us because we want flexible parking. We want to accommodate the visitors and we want retail parking to be able to correlate with the visitor parking. So we'll have certain stalls designated for retail and visitor. And then we'll, of course, have designated stalls for those that do want to keep a vehicle and do want to be able to drive their vehicle on occasion. So it's a great map to kind of showcase, you know, how much of the parking is being utilized and at the peak, what's the visitor count that comes? And of course, tracks, right? What we love is that it's a five-minute walk to the track station. So within five minutes, the residents can get on tracks and be at a Winco in five minutes or all the way downtown in fifteen or catch a ballgame in seven minutes from tracks, which sounds pretty incredible because when I think about driving to the Delta Center for parking, I'm probably spending twenty minutes just looking for parking. So the fact that they have access within a five-minute walk is really incredible. But there's more than just tracks, which is such a good asset. And that's you guys also have programmed in senior shuttles. And even your senior center actually has a shuttle that will, of course, coordinate so they can pick up. So additional transportation, we think, is available for this site. So great reasons and great, great options. When we think about programming, so this is where I think the special sauce is. The programming is really important and critical. It's so important that we are going to designate an operational budget ongoing that's pre-built into the financial model. And the operational budget is for programming, supplies and staffing, and it's permanently there, which means every year it's there and available to spend. We have dedicated staff members, including a community service director that gets hired specifically to manage the programming and the services. So this is something that's critical for these events and these six buildings or six community rooms that we're allocating space and building to continue to get programmed. And you know, when I think about how important this aspect is, if you think about it, every, every building, everybody can build a unit with a kitchen and a bathroom, right? It's really just an apartment building. But what, when I think about my parents and what makes this special is, are they able to meet friends and make friends? And I remember last year, for the first time, I was calling my mom to take her to dinner and for the first time, she kind of blew me off. She was like, oh, no, I got lion dancing. I'm part of the team, I gotta go. And I'm just thinking, why you're blowing me off for lion dancing, what's going on? But then at the same time, I was like, oh, wow, that means you've made some friends and it actually outranks me. And it was just such a good feeling, right? So the test of if these programs work is if it outranks your kids and you can actually, you actually make friends that you want to do stuff with. So this, I think, takes a community service director, somebody that's actually programming it, reading it, making the connections, and making sure whether it's game nights, yoga, education, that people are actually going and getting something out of it. So, so we're going to allocate budget, it's a permanent programming, it's part of our amenity stack, which is different than your typical, you know, swimming pool and, you know, workout fitness gym that you see in every multi-family building. It's, it's more about social community. I think that's the goal. The goal is to outrank your kids and meet, meet some friends, you know? So we're excited about this. It also gives us a great opportunity to program outside services. So for the older generation, they may need some housekeeping services. So we want to contract housekeeping laundry services. These are service providers that already exist in the community that can provide services for our residences. There's also food options and food and meal delivery services, some of which we're talking to about potentially being a part of our retail space and integrating there. So they're just right below. But of course, that's future conversations that we'll start to curate. But third-party services that will bring in, in addition to just the community stuff we do internally. Same with hair, hair services. We have a dedicated barber shop. We're gonna get it filled with the right hairstylist that people like and low-impact dance classes, of course. I know my mom loves lion dancing, so we'll see if that gets in here. And of course, we're building a retail strategy, which is part of your programming and your need of the space. Now, we know this area is not the best for retail today. We hope it improves. It just needs more residences, more other retail channels, and slowly, we're hopeful and positive. So we're happy to contribute retail to this. We're going to be a little self-serving in that we want the retail tenant to be able to integrate with the community. So to be good for, obviously, the residences and the people living above. So we, what we've done is we've written a program that talks about what we're willing to do in the first nine months to try to curate a food-based retailer. So much so, we're willing to discount that food-based retailer's rent or discounting at about thirty percent to try to get them in. And it's because there's not really a great revenue model where we're gonna make up the money to commit to this retail. We built a financial model, so you guys can see, even building this retail space costs us about a million dollars, which we don't really get back. So it's, when we look at it, it's not about getting retail revenue. It's more important that the retail can serve the community and it actually works versus the wrong type of business that makes the building or the community soured. So our goal is to figure out and find the right retailer to put in here. So we're willing to discount the retailer to give them some incentives to come. And that's our, that's our goal of retail. And hopefully this gives you guys also a viewpoint of what it kind of takes and the cost associated with building a retail path. This is where I get to talk about our values. So Marion Willie, my friend and myself, we've both been in Salt Lake City for, feels like forever. It's been over thirty years for both of us. I've been building businesses from snowboard shops to restaurants, coffee shops and a lot of real estate for over thirty years now. So I'm part of the community, grew up here, went to the U of U, and I will forever be a part of this community, same with Marion. And you meet a lot of developers along the way and it's really hard to find people that really align well in values. So when I met Marion and we started doing projects together, we really aligned on values. And it's because I saw the way they handle their tenants. So fun fact and story, they have a budget that they set aside where they just pay for tenants' rents that are within their buildings when they fall behind. Like, I've never heard of something like that in multi-family, but they have that. But it's little things that they're willing to do that I appreciate and value. The other thing about Marion's group is they're not sellers and they're not flippers. I've never actually sold anything unless it was a developer that I was blocking. I sold them a property, but short of that, I've always bought and built properties and just held them. Maybe it's the Asian mentality and for Marion, it's an ownership mentality, but we're not in it for a quick buck. So this is a project, just like the projects I do with Marion and our other projects, we're buying to hold indefinitely. So our goal is to hold this long enough that our kids and the next generation can grow up learning property management, learn how to do this. And hopefully, we shepherd them along the way, do it right, and they get to take over. But what that also hopefully tells you is we're building our buildings differently. Marion and I just finished platform fifteen hundred on Third West and fifteen hundred South. It's a brand-new building and if you drive by and look at the meadow on the outside of the building, the quality of our hallways, the colors of our cabinetry and the design of our lobbies, it's better. I would put it against any affordable and we are light and day better. We match market rate product and we're proud of that. And we, of course, we have to manage it and clean it over twenty, thirty years. So we want to make our jobs easier by building it to last because we're not flippers. So that's another commitment that you'll get if you look at our history and the properties is we're here for the long haul. So with that, these are, of course, the zoning challenges. We're hoping you guys are able to make an adjustment for it, not just because it's a senior housing, but also because we're a transit-oriented development site. I think there's a couple of reasons. But with that, I'd love to have James Brown here talk to you about his experiences within the properties and what he thinks about this site.
Well, hello, mayor and city council members. I'm happy to be here. I tried to bribe him so I could get a new house too, so just understand that motivation. But the thing that caught me about this project was that it was the word community and transportation. What seniors need most importantly is to be part of a community. And as he talked about the retail space and what could happen there, I like the idea that seniors can walk downstairs and get whatever they need to have to sustain their lives. And that's what this project offers, an opportunity for seniors to live within their own realm of existence and do it with prosperity and health and happiness. And I think that's what this project offers for our senior community. The thing about South Salt Lake that I've learned, it really is senior-friendly. It really is about encouraging seniors to move here, be here, live here and live better. This is a great addition to that. When you talk about getting in your car, and I hate driving mine and having to wiggle through all the whatevers to get somewhere, it's a pain in the fanny. Well, this is an opportunity to change that and make transportation a fun thing for seniors and they need some fun in their lives. They need some enjoyment, having a place that they can live in, work in, play in, shop in, and then having transportation so accessible that they don't have to think about it. And believe me, seniors have a lot to think about. You know, we think, we worry, we're in pain, we want to know where the doctor's office is and all of those things. This helps minimize that thing. And I've known Marion for over thirty years. We've worked on Mayor Didi Cardini's committee, community block grants and all of those kinds of things. So I know him to be a good man. I know these people to be good people and you've got a great team working for you. So I think the combination of all of that is going to make this a livable, enjoyable, prosperous community. And that's what South Salt Lake represents, making it easy for its residents to enjoy their lives and not have to worry about how to get from point A to point B and how they live. I hate the word affordable housing. What does that mean? But when you put in community living, community existence and having an ability to get the things you want and need instantly is going to be a great tribute to helping seniors have a good life. So I hope that all the hurdles we have to jump over, we have to get through, we can get through, make this project a reality so we can make the seniors' lives better. And that's my goal as a person who is navigating health and benefits for seniors. So thank you. Vote yes on this project and I'll sing for you later. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
All right. Um, I just have to say that if James Brown, the most passionate man about seniors I know, endorses this project, that means a lot to me. So with that, does anyone on the council right now have any questions or comments? We'll start with Ray and Clarissa.
Okay. Well, first, James, if you're for hire, I want you to deliver my year-end performance review to my boss. We can work out a deal. We can work out a deal for sure. Okay, couple of quick questions. So the first one, I might have missed this, affordable apartments, is, are these for rent affordable or for sale?
For rent.
For rent, okay. And then what was the, James just made a comment on it, but what is affordable? Like, what percent of the market will these be at?
They're usually mixed with various A M I, so from eighty to sixty percent.
Eighty to sixty A M I, okay.
And these are one to two-bedroom units.
One and two bedrooms.
And they are de-restricted, so we're committing for fifty years on this affordability path.
Okay. And I, I should have started with this, but I like your project and I like how it encompasses a holistic approach. Like James was mentioning, the senior living, I could see that you guys are really thoughtful about it. And I also like how you hold on to your investments and manage them. I think that speaks a lot. So I should have started with that and I apologize. Minimum age for, to live here, is it sixty-two, sixty?
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two, okay. So I got a few more years before I can move in. Parking, it would be first come, first served unless the tenant decides to purchase a parking pass or stall?
We don't have the parking plan fully allocated yet and it could be, so it's flexible right now, we're not sure. So we could do both allocated or non-allocated based on if the tenant really needs an allocated spot or if it's better flexible.
Okay.
So we don't have the answer for that.
And in other projects, if you guys do usually sell those parking stalls at a per-month basis?
No, we don't sell it, not for the affordable. Usually it's included, yeah, same with the visitor parking.
Got it, okay, thank you. It's really kind of you. This one, oh, for the outside services, if you bring fitness instructors in.
Yeah.
hairstylists, cleaning services, are those included in the cost of the unit? Or would that be more like à la carte? You can pay for what service you want, or do you sign up for the service? How does that work?
From our, from our goals right now, everything should be included, except for like barber shop services. There's probably a service charge for that third-party vendor to come and cut hair.
Yeah.
What our job is to do is to negotiate that, because this is for the seniors. We, we probably don't want them charging eighty dollars for a haircut. So we're gonna look.
But they'll pay it if it's good.
Our goal is to negotiate the right, the right individuals to come in, right?
Yeah.
Right discount. And since they're not there nine to five, waiting for guests to come in, they're coming in with pre-booked schedules, they can be a little more efficient.
Yeah.
So hopefully, their haircuts are greatly discounted and more of a social activity for people to get to.
Yeah, that's also very kind of you. I knew my grandma cared a great deal about her hair. Um, okay, this last question, I think this is probably more for the staff, and I appreciate Thomas that, for all your, and answering my questions. On the amenities for the staff, I know that some of them include, you know, these rooms. And I imagine your project's gonna be quite good with the amenity rooms. I'm, I'm curious though, on other projects, if we have similar ones to this, we say, you know, X amount of amenity rooms, how do we know that it won't be just an empty room, very basic, four walls and bad carpet? Like, how do we know that if we say an amenity room, is there a square foot, um, minimum that we'd require? I just, I think I wanna, maybe some clarity around the language, so that if we do have other projects, and I'm not worried about this one, that when we say we want these nice amenity rooms, we don't get just, oh, a couple books on the table, this is our library.
This is Jonathan Widenheimer, Community and Economic Development Director. I think, I'll try to unpack them in a couple of bites. We wanted to really distinguish the amenities that you traditionally see in our multifamily projects, whether it's a swimming pool or open space or a, uh, appliance package, that we felt we needed to establish a standard of livability, so that when a market rate project or affordable project came in, there was some understanding of the quality that we expected to reflect our community. As we talked to Stephen and their group, uh, Thomas, we really got to focusing on what amenities, what support things do we need for this type of product? And we started at a retail component where, you know, we were just hammering on a, we need a, we need a restaurant or a grocery store. And this group spent great length and went to great efforts to go through a market analysis to see what the, what it would truly bear. And as we started to talk as a staff and with input from the mayor, and even talking to James and Marion and, and this whole team here, we really got to focusing on building spaces that could support the community connections that James talked about and really supported, uh, whether it was the haircut space or the, the barn dancing space, or whatever those were. So our focus changed big time into these community gathering spaces. I think your question about, and so Thomas and working with them, and they've, they've delivered a package through many months of working back and forth weekly with them, a, a package, an amount, a square footage, a threshold of what we think truly gets to that deliverance of the services. But I do think the question, and I don't know that I know how to answer it, I think it's a good one for them, is how will we ensure it actually happens? You know, I've been to Sharon Gardens a number of times. I don't know how much that stuff is actually used and programmed. I, I think it is a lot, but I can't guarantee you that it is. And so I think through this process and a reminder for you all, I don't know that Jed hammered it home. This is a completely discretionary effort on your part. You, you were show the trade-offs by which you would give a significant reduction in parking potentially, where you could waive other things. You can write the script how we need to. I'm confident through that script writing process that if that's a concern, that Josh and I can work with the applicant to find a way to make sure we either have a minimum threshold that's guaranteed in a monthly or annual auditing, reporting mechanism to build in there would come to mind off the top of my head. But I think knowing this is just a work session,
Yeah.
delivering us with some direction on, hey, I'd be willing to consider this. If you can bring back to me a, a mechanism by which we can get this concern assaged or guaranteed, I think this is the right time to hear it. So, did I, did I hit?
Yeah, I think so. And again, I think it's hard to contrast against this project, cause, you know, you mentioned like the dance studio floors, probably in specific flooring for dance bars, whatever that would entail.
But your concern is the right one. I mean, I, I think they've demonstrated to you the hold and the commitment to how they do their work and the relationship with Marion. I think that's all meaningful. What we need to talk about is who's the next person that's gonna come in, that's not gonna check all those boxes? And how do we make sure we can, if your policy is to support some trade-offs, how we can carry on that quality and address those concerns for the next person?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Right, Clarissa?
Thank you. So it all sounds great. I love this idea because it's, it's, I know we all would like to have our grandparents closer and having them in a community that can thrive rather than them being alone somewhere by themselves. It's a great concept. The only thing that I always consider when we think about developments is like this is on-street parking, like three-nine south. Um, I'm a resident in that area, um, actually go further down, but I always frequent three-nine hundred south. My concern is when we do have, and this is probably, you already did address, that you're willing to open a market downtown where we talked about this. And I think one of the concerns I have is when we have retail space below development. In that particular area, we have had, right next door to user Harmony Park Apartments that are there, they have had a retail space that has been vacant since they opened. And that is a concern for me when we have vacant areas. Is it gonna be, continue to be vacant? Um, you know, at that point, what happens? Because you did address that you would bring in and supplement some income or rent for them to come in to do that. And the only issue I have with that is when we do have the on-street parking, because we already, there is already an issue right in that little area from Harmony Park, from their residence, parking on the streets, very close to the, um, intersections, where it makes it hard for buses to turn in there. I wonder if there is another option to have parking for that market, perhaps closer onsite? If there's a amount, you know, if nobody chooses to park in those areas, if there could be something considered for that. Um, also, and I don't know about that particular parking structure for Harmony Park, but could there be an issue where those residents park in your loc, in the location for these apart, for your residents? There could be that possibility. How do we address that, though? It, it, and this is probably where, uh, maybe somebody had asked about parking passes, if that gets submitted to them. So this way, you don't have people coming in from the overflow from the apartments parking there. So that's, I think it's a great area, um, for it, but I think it's just little things that would, that I know irritate me when I'm driving down that way, because there is parking that people shouldn't be parking there.
Yeah, absolutely. Parking is always a concern. Uh, we've already called our neighbors Harmony. Fortunately, I've been talking to them even about their empty space. They do have some extra space outside of their gate, which is flex space for the retail. We've even talked to them about sharing it for our retail as well, because it's just right in front of it. And they're open to it, based on if, you know, if we have a retailer that needs more parking, they'll just rent stalls from them and pay for it. So it's just a price per stall. So in addition to street, we do have shared parking and we could contract more with Harmony. They're open to that. Cause I think they're just excited there's more residences and more activity in the area, and we're doing a good project that will help to block. But within our parking structure, a lot of our spaces, which is why we want it flexible, is so that it can be in the daytime when the visitors aren't there. It can be used for retail and shopping traffic and stuff like that. And then, of course, if, as long as people don't abuse it, we probably aren't gonna lock it up or do parking passes. So hopefully, it doesn't get abused. But whatever the situation is, hopefully, at that time, we will find a modern solution for it. But as of now, we do have flex space inside our stalls, street parking. And our neighbor Harmony is in great conversation with us about just bringing more activity to the neighborhood.
Thank you. Go ahead, Corey.
Um, I'm just curious if, uh, any particular kind of type of retail you guys are wanting to put in that space or kind of looking towards?
Yeah, there's an ideal retail list and it's in the deck, uh, but it's mostly food. So if you think of all the small boutique grocers, whether it's Lee's Market, Liberty Heights, the small ones, Rancho even, we just, we want a grocer, that's ideal. Second is meal prep or food that can actually just deliver meals upstairs. And our community coordinator can help them take orders and figure out a system to have a built-in clientele right upstairs. So that's ideal, which is where we're willing to discount, you know, up to thirty percent, just to get that retailer in, knowing that the area might be a little young for, meaning, may not have enough residences to sustain. So we'll discount the rent to try to entice them to come early. Now, if it's not the right retailer, we, we honestly would probably like to have it empty, maybe similar to Harmony, than put the wrong retailer in. But it could also be medical services, could be the fitness instructor, it could be other things. But for now, our idea would be food-based.
And we have agreed that we would institute specific standards in the CUP criteria that would preclude certain types of retail. It wouldn't be preferred. And, um, one of the, one of the interesting things to your point about the, the vacant space next door is they have had some talks with that, um, developer about synergies between who they might be able to get into this place and how they could couple together to maybe have a more comprehensive approach to some healthcare or other types of services.
So Ray talked about affordability. I'm just curious, are you gonna allow Medicaid and Medicare recipients to be clients?
About Medicaid recipients or how that impacts our site?
It's not an assisted living facility?
Okay.
So I don't.
Do you wanna come to the microphone and state your name and yeah, go to the microphone. Thank you.
My name is Arlie Green. I work with Western Reach Nonprofit Housing Corporation. I'm a part of the development team. So this would not be any type of assisted living or, uh, it's, it's just a rental facility. So I don't believe that we can accept Medicare or Medicaid payments per se. So it would just be on the tenant, but I did want to clarify that our AMI structure would be most likely somewhere between thirty to sixty percent AMI. So we would be at a more steeper discount than, you know, market rate. And I know that downtown Salt Lake has been having issues, even at the sixty percent AMI, uh, competing with market rate buildings. So ours would be even steeper than that to help, you know, even seniors on a fixed income basis. So seniors even living on social security would qualify for our apartment. But as far as Medicare and Medicaid go, I don't believe that we have the ability to accept those as payment.
So yeah, that, that was my next question was, are you an assisted living or just like, so you're just like,
Just.
It's like an apartment complex?
Correct.
Okay, so each, each apartment would have its own kitchen added, wouldn't it? You don't have like a dining area that they would go to?
No. But as Thomas mentioned, we would like to try to partner with potentially either an onsite or even an offsite food provider that would be able to help the, and assist the tenants in having meals if they needed something along those lines. But no, no onsite dining hall necessarily.
Okay.
Alright, our time is up, but I, they, they already asked all the questions I had. And so we love this project. Um, I, I'm really impressed. I'm impressed with your, your vision, the way you manage your properties. And, um, we're excited about this, so we will continue to work on this and we will have this back. So thank you for your time tonight.
Alright, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
With that, we will adjourn the work meeting and we'll just take a quick one-minute break to switch over to the regular meeting.